I call an order to the reg. meeting of the Panesville City Council, Monday, August 8th. Call fellow all please.
Bill?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
David?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the special call made on July 18th?
Make a motion to approve it. Yes, sir. July 18th.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any questions or comments to join the departmental reports?
Make a motion to approve votes.
I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And Bill, so have you motioned to pay the bills as presented?
I make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I've got one announcement. This week, we received a very nice certificate and Fran and Gerald brought it down on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, recognizing Panesville as the 19th safest city in the state of Kentucky. And the only one in this area, I think, that they received that designation. So, we're proud of that. Thank you, Bill Holbrook and Mike Rowe and your men for the good job that you do. First item of business, I'd like to appoint, as a replacement for Mike Schmidt, who has resigned from Panesville City Council, I'd like to appoint Philip Goggins. Any discussions or questions concerning Mr. Goggins?
Make a motion to approve that.
I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second item of business is the 2017 motor vehicle and watercraft property tax rate. As you'll see in the package, I would recommend we leave that rate as it has been for a number of years at 11.480 cents per 100.
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is a van usage ordinance, which more specifically deals with mobile homes, you said you were saying.
Subtle.
And we've had some upset because there had been a double-wide mobile home posted in the city of Panesville, first one in some number of years. And we have an ordinance that permits that, that was passed in 2005. And just wanted to get Gerald's feeling as to whether we needed to go back and repeal that ordinance, or whether we want to shore it up by putting some more provisions on it. Any thoughts or comments on that?
I say we repeal it, myself. I mean, I was, I remember when we did that, you knew what the reason was, because of that double-wide out there about the, where's utilities bill, the utilities office is now, so. And we really should have gone back and addressed that after that, but I guess we didn't. We didn't.
Yeah, the easy thing to do with the supplement would be, we're just
We should have put a time limit.
Give them a variance for that.
Yeah, but we didn't do it, so. But I, I mean, I make a motion to repeal it myself, because I've heard a lot of discontentment about it.
I say.
I think our property values are already low enough in pound right now to where we don't need to lower it anymore. As I discussed this, I didn't know this was, when I talked to you Monday, I wasn't aware and I remembered this, but then I got it brought to my attention, so I remembered it after that, okay, so.
Who's putting that in now?
I don't know.
I know Gary, when Carl lived in the house beside Carl Chandler, I know, I think Gary first bought that property, but I didn't know if he still owns that or not.
No, I don't think so. It wasn't, I don't think, it wasn't somebody I didn't know.
So, that's already a done deal, we can't do anything about that?
We can't do anything about it now?
No.
As long as they, now, unless they do not comply with the terms of the permit that they receive.
Okay.
The amendment, the amendment, what got it acted back in 2005 was an amendment that allowed installation of a qualified manufactured home as defined by the state statute. And that's got some
Yeah, some vague loopholes in it, too. Well, I mean, you know, it
Bits and manufacturer date and various things in it, so, I mean, as long as the current holder issue complies with this definition of qualified manufactured home, I don't see there any way that you can prohibit that, if they meet that statute.
Yeah, I got, I got two thoughts on that. One is that there are certain times and places that is probably appropriate. But the problem you run into is, is you're always going around to people that are trying to get around what you're trying to do and put it somewhere where you don't want it.
The only problem, not the only problem, but I'm sure, I'm sure within the last 10 years, I've told people you couldn't put, you know, and I feel real bad about that because someone obviously knew about the loophole, and I just wondered, that's why I asked it was, that obviously knew there was a loophole in there and I didn't, and I've lived here all my life.
Well, it wasn't really a loophole, it was just
Well, you know what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
This amendment that allows a qualified manufactured home also provides that it shall only be placed in sections of the city zone R2 or R3.
Well, I mean, I apologize to anybody.
Residential, too.
I just assumed you could.
If that is, I imagine it would be, I would imagine.
Most of, most of the residential area in the city is R2 or R3, if that is R2.
Well, one of the worst things, I think we did, we didn't put anything in this amendment that said that the surrounding landowners had a right to, you know, have comments about this, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you get
But you know, well, that
Gets really, gets really complicated if you try to put provisions like that in there.
We've got a motion, a second to repeal it.
Any further discussion, discussion?
Let's to repeal the amendment.
Yeah, just the amendment, we leave the
So, then it leaves the
It leaves
Back to the original that says no mobile homes
No manufactured homes, correct.
How would we have town with that?
Have it listed? Or does it have to come from the
You have to readings and all that sort of thing.
It would have to be an ordinance, amended ordinance.
So, can we just read the amendment and have first?
Well, the, as I understand it, the section that you want amended is section 152.01, so that it will go back to reading as originally drafted, which says it shall be unlawful to place or locate within the city any mobile homes or house trailers or any structure transported on its own wheels for commercial or residential use.
So, that, that constitutes the first reading of the amendment right there? We go to motion and a second?
You don't make a vote, do you?
No, we don't make a vote. Can we get that motion, they're sitting second, one more time?
I made a motion. A second.
A second, and that is to appeal or to
amend section 152.01 of the city code order.
Okay, we'll have a second reading at the next possible time. Joe Jacobs. Several years ago, I announced in the city council meeting that we received a grant to do extensive sidewalk repairs, and we are, we are finally there. We received, we bid that project approximately 3,000 feet of sidewalk, right there. And Joe, that's Joe Jacobs of Big Sandy, yeah, he used to stay in Regina, but this is Joe. So, Joe, working with Dewey Boak, Boak Engineering, have gone through all the steps. We had several bidders on the project, which you have a sheet that shows you those bidders and the bids. And according to this, Joe, we don't have to accept the bids, but there is a provision in the state paperwork that says we have to, we have to issue a letter of recommendation.
That's right, the city needs to issue a letter of recommendation recommending that the bid be awarded to the apparent low bidder. And this is in full, right? There's no, no, we're not outing anybody?
No, there's no match on this, on this paper award.
And this is, it goes around, if this was the one at West Third Down, Third Street, correct?
Down Third Street, Church Street, West Street, Elm Street is where the project
So, this ground solutions, it's got this low bid, who is it, do you know?
That's
Somebody local or out of way near?
Yeah, it's, well, I've gone blank.
You help me? That's a priest.
Edsel Priest.
Oh, wait a minute.
And all these bidders had, went through a, went through a approval process with the state to be eligible to bid this project. There were several more that didn't, that couldn't bid it because, because they hadn't gone through the proper qualification system with the state of Kentucky. And Edsel, Edsel did, his company named Ground Solutions was the tallest, was the tallest of the group, as you see, $114,231.
Do you need a motion? We need it.
What was the amount?
We need a motion to send that to the state, that we approve, that we recommend?
Need a motion to, need a motion to issue a letter of recommendation that the, that we accept, that the whole bid be accepted.
Be apparent low bidder.
The apparent low bid be accepted.
I say. That's right. So, I say.
I say it, the motion, Sean's making.
I'm making, whatever, whatever he just said, I'm making.
Whatever you said, Sean, I'm saying.
All in favor? Oppose? When does that, when will that work actually start now?
The cabinet is in the process of collecting all of the post-bid documents, making sure that the bidder has all the certifications in place. Once they have all that paperwork, they will issue permission for us to go ahead and award that contract. The contract will be in place, and then they'll be able to start as soon as the contractor's ready. So, I would say sometime within the next three to four weeks, we'll have all of that paperwork done, and they'll be ready to start construction.
And then there's a, there's a specified time that has to be completed, is that correct?
There is. I'm not certain what the time limit is, but it was, the work has to be completed in a reasonable time, and the bid packets actually specify a number of working days that that had to be completed in. I couldn't say without going through the paperwork.
Don't quote me on that.
What were those streets again? The name of the streets that?
Third Street, Elm Street, Church Street, and West Street.
Third Street, did you say first?
Yeah, the real bad section.
On the right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to go call me about that.
On Third Street and Church Street, and there, there's something we've worked on. Well, let's go ahead with item number five. We tabled the sewer rate increase at the previous meeting. We have had some, some discussion about that, about packages and that with the division of water since then. Hopefully everyone wants to have a chance to think about it. You know, in thinking about this thing, it's a tough, it's a tough pill to swallow, but the biggest thing that strikes me is that if, if, if even Panesville Utilities had the cash to go ahead and pay for this $4,900,000 instead of borrowing the money, which is why the rate increase is necessary, so we have, have funds to pay back this $4,900,000. But if they had that $4,900,000, that would mean we could forego the $2,100,000 grant, because the grant and the loan don't get through rural development. Correct me if I say something wrong here, Bob.
You're on target.
Rural development requires you, no matter what kind of funds you have in-house, rural development requires you to actually go borrow money, whether you need to or not. That's what he just said.
In order to get the grant.
To get the grant.
To get the grant. You have the money in-house, but you still have to go, I mean,
It's a seventy point.
It's illogical, I mean, I mean, if you have the money and it's just sitting there in a fund, and I'm not saying that you all do, but I'm just saying that it just doesn't make any sense why rural development is in the business of promoting borrowing money, you know, it doesn't, but regardless, I mean, and like the mayor said, I mean, this is, no matter how you look at it, it's a pill you gotta swallow, I mean, you gotta pick your poison here, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is pick the least offensive poison, but
Well, I thought the project last week was almost settled, eh?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, so now you're gonna borrow, what, two point, or the grant, how much? How much is the grant?
Two point one. The loan is 4.9 for total seven.
What'd they say to you all when you went there at the 27th? How much time, you've been, they've put it off for four years, can't we get another three or four?
They won't answer that question. They won't answer that question. What was your outcome with the division of water if it hasn't been? That meeting, a follow-up to a meeting four years ago, and got a lot of the agreed order and corrective action plan at that time. And I was in a pretty good position, because they asked questions regarding that agreed order. The previous management had done all these things, then I was able to handle this packet, this packet, this packet, until we got to the question about the INI project, she says, I guess you've got that done? No. So, I got one of those over the glasses looks at that point. But this was the wet water division, their job is to, is to help us through these things. It wasn't the enforcement people, and we really don't want to be there, but when they come, it's all bad news.
It's all bad news to us. We're sitting here having a race to keep it right.
One thing I would like to clarify, based on some of the words I've heard, this is not anybody's fault that we have to do this work. I've been quoted as saying it was somebody's fault. It's not, it's just the way things were done many years ago, and it's whether or not it ever worked. All cities are, are having to do this kind of work.
Well, they were talking about, and I was at, I missed the last meeting, and so I really, I don't know exactly what all went on, but the, you know, I thought one of the reasons that you wanted to keep a good amount of money in reserves there was just so you could do projects like these. So, Sean was saying it didn't matter how much money we had, they were still gonna require us to borrow, and even if we had
To get the grant, because we have nowhere near enough money in reserve to
Yeah.
Right.
It just seemed strange to me that they would require you, you know, whether you have the money or not, you gotta go borrow money. I mean, I mean, there's some
Yeah, right.
We borrowed money for several, for amicacies, and, at least amicacies, and I remember it was exactly the same way through rural development. We borrowed 55% of the money and 35%, grant, and that you had to do one to get the other, or you had to, yeah, had to do one to get the other.
Yep, maybe you had to borrow it, but you didn't have it.
Yeah, you didn't have it.
Right, well, they don't have it.
I got these everywhere.
They don't have it.
Yes, okay.
What is the, you know, on this rate, it says, I guess the water rate, first 2,000 gallons, I'm saying that that's, that's, what does the average household use and waste?
It could be in the 3,000 range.
It looks like the bulk of the customers is at 3,000 to 4,000 water usage, and that's what we're billing at, you know, I just did some quick math here, and so don't pull me to task here, but, you know, and of course, I voted for it, I met them up at the last meeting, so they had swallowed this pill, but, you know, we're still a little out of kilter, you know, I do appreciate, and some of the people from the utility commission I spoke with, you know, as far as that, those four or five customers, or seven or eight customers, whatever the number is, that are at that million gallons of usage, you can't, you know, just mathematically do the math, because it would throw their numbers so far out, but, you know, the bulk of it is 3,000 to 4,000 gallons, and from what they're currently paying to what we're suggesting paying under this proposed plan of flat four and then increases, they're actually gonna see about a 20% increase in their monthly sewage bill. And then the next larger, largest group is that 20,000 to 30,000, which looks like it's about 30 customers or more, and they're at 16%. You know, it's, it were close, but we're not, I think we can maybe put a little bit more on their backs. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you, you know, you're looking, I do understand that, you know, you got just a small number of customers that have that million or half a million gallons of usage, and if you just go ahead and mathematically spread it out, which was my initial suggestion, yeah, it's gonna throw their sewage bill from $60,000 to, you know, 110,000, I mean, it'd be, yeah, it'd be, you know, yeah, at that point, you know, you're losing a customer. That would devastate or be, you know, a big impact to utilities.
And you're like the voice for them, if somebody wants to come in with a nuke.
Well, yeah, no, that's, that's a good point, too.
I don't think, you know, is there more than 2700 homes in the city of Panesville? And that's all that's on the sewer? 2,200 and something? You've had, I'm not sure what you have there, there's roughly
2,265, let's jump. For residential and non-residential panes availability is 2,265.
Panesville system, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then we have 310 impressed burn totals, 2575 on the sewage system.
West Vanler's on sewage system, isn't it?
Well, that's about right, I hope if you figure 2.3 average per household.
Yeah, the numbers, that's pretty much, yeah.
That gets it, now 4500, 5,000 feet.
Well, I'm gonna throw the motion out there one more time, just to let it die for a second, once again, but I just made the motion, and then we go ahead and authorize Panesville Utilities to charge a flat $4, the 15% above the 2,000 gallons and 7.5% above 100,000 gallons. I mean, you know, you're faced with some absolute facts. One is that they have to do it, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to do it kicking the can on down the road, you know, it's like we're waiting for somebody to start finding us $1,000 today to make a decision, you know, and, and I don't know if that's good math. And, and the other fact is, none of us want to do it, but I'm not running free elections, so I'm gonna make a motion.
Is Honey Branch, excuse me, no.
That's right, I've done.
Honey Branch is, that's where all this gets processed, correct?
No.
Okay, right now, they're doing it?
The 2,200 customers process of the Panesville plan, and then the balance is at Honey Branch.
Well, you know what I'm gonna say, Honey Branch can take up to a million, right? So, right now, we're doing what, 300,000?
About 350 to 400,000.
Why can't we push all that up to Honey Branch?
Everything's more there than that. The long-term proposal would be to get more onto Honey Branch, but it won't handle all of it.
Y'all just engineering to, to, to push that, all that sewage up to Honey Branch, it's gonna cost
Well, I mean, I know, but that will
25 million? Yeah.
It'd be good, they can handle it, but we can't get it there without spending 25 million.
Is this the absolute lowest, the $4 rate that you can go to, or can we not get it down to $2, and like Coach Runyon said there a minute ago, maybe ladder it up every six months a year or something to that effect, to where everybody's not hit wicked all the time? It's like I told you, you know, we're taxed to death.
That would have been the ideal situation, if we could have done this a couple of years ago.
Okay, okay, why didn't we? I mean, because we're sitting up here as a council, and we have no control over the money you all take in, or the money you spend.
That's exactly
But yet, we get to poop into the stick of having to vote to raise rates.
But I actually asked RD the question if we could do some sort of staging in on this, and they said not at this point.
How long are you gonna have the loan for?
It's 40 years.
Do your dollars mine, right? I mean, things that take the
Four years?
Five ain't nothing. One month.
Not a dollar.
Can they come up with anything else, Bob? Did y'all do anything else?
No.
I know you can't say for them, but
But the rural development, it's, it's up to us, I'm And we look at a lot of different scenarios, and this is the one that actually adds up.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what happened a long time ago is they used to say, I didn't know that you all had your own sewage right now. It was, it was based upon, when they first put it in, because I know Jimmy was in there when they first put it in, and it was like, if your water bill was 20, your sewage rate was 40. And of course, when you look at it, it still looks like that.
Well, what happened there, Sarah, was that was when they got us over here for being non-applying, so we were gonna be fined $10,000.
Right, that's right.
That's when we built the new one, but like I told you before, the deal was, when we got that paid for, that's that late
It was supposed to go off.
Yeah, well, guess what? You're still paying.
Is anybody else not filing for reelection?
Yeah, I'm not, but I feel like we're set.
It don't have anything to do with
No.
No, I didn't
I just
It's not a law system, it's just for the people here.
It's just a matter of trying to treat our citizens the right way.
It's fairly false.
Especially when we got people about to lose their house up here in Carter Lane.
Right, exactly. Came at a bad time, didn't it?
It's a real bad time. You know, the economy's bad, people struggling to make ends meet, and then all of a sudden, we sit up here and we're gonna raise them a flat $4, and actually, from what you're saying, it's gonna be more than that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the average, well, mayor, the average Yeah, but the bulk of the customers is at 3,000 to 4,000. You're saying you're looking at about an average with the rate, you know, increase by $8, but, yeah, and you know, and I hope that, you know, Division of Water, that they, somehow they lose our paperwork and none of this will ever happen to do it again, but my fear is that if it's not addressed, then all of a sudden, I mean, I know how the government works, you know, Jim, how the government works, all of a sudden, you think, well, they forgot about me, and then you get a letter in the mail certified saying, okay, here's you, pay up. And, and that's my fear, but, you know, whatever, I mean.
I agree with you, Sean, on that. But the only comment I say is, is I, we got, we, to 0 to 2,000 is, you know, is livable with, but when you start going above it, I think we should have staggered this thing a little bit more to where, you know, that it didn't go such a, you know, you've gone from, from 2,000 to 100,000 on the same rate, you know what I mean? So, I just think we should have staggered it a little bit more. If we could come out with the same amount of money, that's just my opinion.
Well, yeah, and you know, when we were down at the utility office, you know, I made the suggestion, you know, not looking at all the numbers like a spreadsheet that's been put together, but looking at all the numbers, saying, hey, you know, this is easy math, you just go through there and you say X, and you just go X number, you know, gallons, and you just go ahead and say it, that's what everybody has to pay, but without realizing But without realizing that you've got some of these commercial, large commercial customers that, you know, are already paying sixty thousand, and then you're now gonna ask them to pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and you got other, and we just, not just that one customer, there's other customers that are, and just like Jim said, you know, if you've got customers, maybe we want to bring in the area. And then all of a sudden, they look at our utility rates, and they go, whoa, you know, so you can't just mathematically just evenly do it.
It can't hurt your employers, because your employers, or some of, maybe that these people can't have a job.
I mean, they gotta pay a share, but you can't just evenly do it, because it ends up throwing the, out of whack, I mean...
And the schools, and...
Yeah.
Hospital, and ghostbusters, heavy users, and that's who are in these, up here. And those who also employ all the people.
Yeah, yeah, sure, the school and the hospital, too big for the floors in, city limits, right?
And the prison.
Well, they're, but they're not, yeah, yeah, you're right. Well, okay.
Of course, they had, Jimmy's had a meeting the other night, I guess I was the only one who showed up, or I was the only, I was the only, it was only about five people, I was the only council member, or, or anything there. Anyway, they were, they go, and he went, they went over this proposed implementation, but Bob, you didn't, you didn't talk about that, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, these different phases of this thing, and you, if you remember, he said more likely you probably wouldn't do phase three, if you remember, so...
Yeah, but phase three would be the expansion of the sewer package, and it's the biggest of the phases, about ten million dollars to expand the sewer plant to make future use.
And the whole thing they got on here was like, what the three phases was, gonna raise it twenty-two dollars a month, the whole thing. So, you know, this eight dollars and something, or whatever, this is a big chunk of that twenty, because I asked the consultant, what's his name, Bob?
That's Don Sexler.
Okay, and I actually, I said, well, without the phase three, how, what kind of money are you talking? He said, probably, he worked maybe eight to ten dollars less than that, and he said, probably never have to do the phase three, and I said, that was his thought, so, so you're, so you're, have you ever seen this, Sean?
No.
Oh, okay, here, you can take a look at it, you're welcome, because they get, they give me one that I didn't have, so... But anyway, so you're talking, you know, ten dollars, you're talking about twelve bucks for the two phases, so this is pretty harsh on one phase here, you know what I mean? So, the way I see it, but that's just...
Sounds like they're coming back.
Huh?
Sounds like after this, they'll come back.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, because we'd have to do more, yeah, we are.
Let me ask, does, is, uh, City Prestonburg, is their utilities under, is it like ours, or is it under their city government?
It's, it's, it's very similar to this.
Yeah, they did this, they did this project in the Bible, about three or four years ago.
They did.
Remember when they had the whole downtown going up? They were doing this...
I'm assuming they're...
They were addressing the timeline of problems there.
But they were, they were fortunate, they were able to kinda tie that in with the core engineers project, helped them out a lot.
You need to move to the table again?
They're still flooding the streets.
Because I don't think you're gonna get a second.
Your smile, smiles all around, check them out.
Smile.
All right, do we have, do we have a motion to the table?
I'll take that one. I'm seconding your motion.
All right.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? It shall be done.
If you got forty years' loan, I'd come back with two dollars this next time, maybe we can get it up to four eventually. I'm not making fun of it, Bob, but you understand the situation we're in?
I understand very well.
Very, very serious matter, and I understand, I don't mean by lie, that it's, it's, it's a lot of dollars, and it's a, it's a big, hard to take to, to do the work itself, if they're gonna take, keep sitting torn up for a long time.
It's a late thing about the project.
Have we heard anything on Carter Lane?
Yeah.
Uh, no. I'm looking at you, Jared, though, to hear, huh?
That was the question.
Have we heard anything on Carter Lane?
No. We had contact, and the mayor remembers with Hal Rogers' office, and everything was being reviewed, and it looked like that we might be able to start the, uh, you know, feasibility survey and all of that pretty soon. But after that email conversation we had with him, we haven't heard anything else, so I'm just talking to the bell about it before. So, we've answered all of our questions.
No, it's just their turn.
We've done all of our work, believe me.
Oh, I hear you.
Everybody, please, believe me, you've done everything we can, and it's set in Atlanta. You've got any good friends in Atlanta with FEMA, give them a call.
Now, how is your house look? How is, is it, is it slimmer, is there, is it worse?
You can tell different stuff all the time, cracks getting bigger, stuff moving, along with the road. If you've got a slide, it's constantly gonna be moving, it's not gonna stay long.
Every run.
I know, and it's more than that, it's how long it's gonna be able to stay.
Sometime back, uh, really, both of these people went up there and put some stakes in the ground, and they checked him again, how it's been a couple of weeks ago now, and he said it has moved.
It moves, yeah.
No, it's all, um, it's the same, the same, it's, it'll end up on the road.
Traveling every day, and you can tell it, because it just keeps...
You can tell big deal, it says.
Nobody getting help.
Anything further from council?
There's no, there's no good news in that, I don't, I don't know, I could say.
Anybody got anything else from council? Anything from, anybody?
Do we need a comment at all on the meeting we had?
Yes.
Uh, last meeting, uh, the, someone brought to our attention as far as wanting to have some kind of policy changes on the record service in town, and how the police department called and used different record services in the most equitable way. Everybody, record service is in town, mayor appointed Phil Mike and myself, we met, uh, in his office Friday. There's just another, a number of things to kinda look at, as far as, it's not just simply, okay, you have a rotation, sometimes, you know, people request somebody, how's that change rotation? Sometimes, we just have city vehicles that need to be towed and all that, so we're gonna rewrite the policy. Jeff, uh, our city attorney wasn't able to be there, and we wanna consult with him to make sure that we're not creating a policy that's illegal, or, you know, is not, that we have to go back and recreate. So, uh, we're gonna have another meeting next, uh, sometime in the near future, and we're working on that, for those individuals that wanted to have some kind of policy update. Is that factory? That's factory, okay.
Anything else? Not, do we have more than that?
Just a moment, uh, when my wife and I were coming here tonight, uh, we were talking about one aspect of what you all were gonna discuss, and I didn't get to tell her something. I learned a while ago, I talked to Paul Daniels, and I think everybody knows Paul, Paul Barber Daniels, and for years, you remember, he had that little, looked like a trailer sitting there where old City Market was. And as long as he sat there and kept his business there, and he was fine, but the property was sold, and he had to move. And the city told him that he couldn't put that anywhere, anywhere inside the city limits. So that's what ran him out of town, he had to go out there to, to Lonesville, where he's at. But he told me, and this is the part I didn't tell you, Sarah, is that there was a trailer type structure. Now, even though you've rescinded this, under what you've got, once you rescinded, there was, somebody came in with a trailer, and they brought in the trailer bed, the platform. And then they brought in the trailer parks, the walls and everything, and they built it from the ground up here, and you, they were able to keep it here, so there is a loophole or something. And Jeff, feel free to, to call Paul, because like I said, he went round and round it with this, with the city a few years ago, and knows quite a bit about it. So there, you might wanna check and see if there's, just make sure all the bases are covered in this, when, if you guys are rescinding this, make sure that somebody can't get around some...
That's referred to as a modular home, and what we're, you know, trying to address, I mean, a modular home would be pretty much a prefab house that just has the walls, comes in on a skid or a flatbed truck, and pieces apart. And it's assembled there, no different than if you were to go out here to Home, or to Lowe's, and purchase a wall, you know, and assemble four walls together. So it's, it's manufactured in units, and then just assembled at location. What we're addressing is something that came in, and I think the statute says, comes in on its own wheels and axle, and, and that typically, uh...
Well, his, his little workshop did not come in on its own wheels. It was made to sit down on a slab of concrete with all the, the plumbing and everything, twenty-four feet.
Yeah, we, you know, my dad used to be in the mobile home business, and we sold him that mobile home, so, that's why, no, and, and I'm pretty certain that he just took the wheels and axle and tongue off of it, and set it on a concrete foundation, I mean, at the time. You know, a modular home wouldn't have been, would've been typically built differently than that.
Well, the modular home has to be put, I heard, I was told to have it set with a crane, a modular home. Now, a prefab home maybe, but one of them has to be put down with a crane, that's what the guy out down there in Louisiana taught me, so I don't know.
I mean, the ones we used to sell, the ones we used to sell, you'd have a flatbed truck to pull up to a concrete or a, a block foundation, and then they would pull it, they would have, you know, what do you call those things? Winch, it would winch it back on top of the, you know, the, the foundation, and it wouldn't be a crane, because that's a big expense, you know, but, I, I don't know, I...
We're gonna rescind it anyway.
Yeah, we're gonna rescind it. All right, everybody seconded that, John? I'm seconding.
All in favor of John? Opposed? We're a German.